Test one, two. Test.
Let's have to run it if.
Go ahead and get started then.
Have to.
Yep.
You might explain that.
Yep. Good evening. A call to order. The city council meeting for the city of Augusta for March, I'm sorry, Monday, July 7th, 2025. And one day, the panel council, excuse me, I want to apologize to everyone for being a little tardy getting on. We've had some technical difficulties. You should be able to hear us, though you might not be able to see us. So the mayor is out this evening, so my name is Kip Richardson. I'll be presiding over the meeting this evening. And we'll start the meeting by standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forged in sands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll join me and bow your heads in prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we just want to thank you for the many things that you do for us, dear Lord, for the wonderful community we have, and for all the people that live here, dear Lord, that give of their time, that give of their money, that give of their effort, dear Lord, to give of the prayers for those in our community. We pray for the communities in Texas tonight, dear Lord, that have been through the flood, dear Lord. We just pray for the families and all of the lost loved ones, and for the rescuers and those working to do recovery, dear Lord. Again, we thank you for this community. We just ask you to watch over us during this meeting, dear Lord, to help us to listen to one another and be open and do the very best job that we can do for the members of our community, dear Lord. These things that are created in your name. Amen. All right, we'll start the meeting tonight, reviewing our city council meeting minutes for June the 16th, 2025, and the June 30th, 2025 council work session.
I move for the approval of the minutes of June 16th, 2025 council meeting and the June 30th, 2025 council work session.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second for approval of the council meeting minutes for July, June 16th and June 30th. All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Our next order of business is the appropriation ordinance. Would you consider approval of ordinance appropriation ordinance number 6A dated June 18th, 2025, and number seven dated July 2nd, 2025?
I move for the approval of the appropriation number 6A dated June 18th, 2025, and number seven dated July 2nd, 2025.
Second it. We've had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. That moves us into our visitor section. And we'll normally have any of those that are not under our normal council, have an agenda item that are on there. You can come up to speak for five minutes. Staff, did you have something you wanted to go over first?
No, sir.
Okay. We had Julie Kraft, is she supposed to show up tonight?
I think Adam's going to speak.
Okay, okay. We have Adam Kraft tonight. He is here to request approval for the trot at Like It's Hot Charity Turkey Trot on November 29th, 2025. Adam, if you'll come up to the stand and give us your full name and address.
It's Adam Kraft. I live in 33 Colony Court.
Thank you. Did you want to make a request to the council this evening?
I'll just maybe make a request for approval for this event. Thanksgiving, my wife is kind of taking this on her own, was unable to be here tonight. So there's any questions, I can answer them. And I think it's benefiting ignite Augusta. All the questions will go to that call.
Okay, thank you. Everybody have any questions for Adam? I'll entertain a motion. Want to do any, take any action on it?
Nope. I make a motion for the approval of Trot It Like It's Hot Charity Turkey Trot on November 29th, 2025.
I've got a motion, a couple of seconds, to approve the Trot It Like It's Hot Charity Turkey Trot on November 29th. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything from the audience?
I have one other thing. I would like to mention my appreciation to Ms. Jones. I spoke with her a couple of months ago. We had a good conversation about possibility of relaxing ordinance, if you will, about the new food trucks on city property. I understand the dialogue. I spoke to a few council meetings about it, kind of brainstormed about it. And I do, were not concerned about that. Anything else I can do to assist in this matter? I think that Councilman Brown and I have also discussed that final location, which we think would be ideal for the downtown area. That's something that can be moved along forward.
We actually, staff has a meeting for tomorrow morning to discuss some proposed ordinances or recommendations for the council to consider to future meetings. So hopefully be seen in the near future.
Glad to hear that. Very much. That's all I've got.
Yeah, and before something's brought to council, if you could run it for Adam, we could share what we're thinking as well.
As Cammy and Sam, the city planner and I are all supposed to meet tomorrow morning just to kind of bring some and look at some recommendations that he, the planner had. And so definitely could reach out then.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. All right, moving on to our first order of business. Presentation of 2024 Audit and Finance. Sean Gordon here with us this evening. He's going to give a presentation. Sean?
Yes, sir. Thank you. My name is Sean Gordon with Gordon's Executive Day. I will perform the 2024 audit of the city, so I'll go through that audit report, financial statements that you saw in the agenda packet. We'll start with pages one through three. This is called Here we discuss a variety of things, including the opinions that the city's financial statements. Further on down, we talk about management and accounting responsibilities for the city's financial statements, and then a few more of our responsibilities as well. Our most important job and kind of requirement as auditors to issue auditors' opinion on the city's financial statements. And you can see that the third paragraph down on page one, there's the italicized heading called unmodified opinion on regulatory basis of accounting. So that paragraph there says that we issued highest opinion. So that reflects very well on the financial internal control management by city staff during the calendar year 1231, 2024. So, great job all around to everybody in the accounting and audit process from the city staff side. We'll go forward to the next section, which is pages four, five. This is called the summary statement of receipts expenditures and how to cover cash. Here you'll see in all the left-hand column, all of the different funds of the city, followed by for each of those funds, beginning cash, receipts, expenditures, and then ending cash. You'll see at the very bottom of that right-hand column on page two, five, that the city is reporting a little over 28.29 million dollars on hand as of 1231, 2024, which will play into your budget as you come across for 2026. The next section forward is pages six through 14, and these are the notes of financial statements. This is mostly the same as what some of you have been on the council, seen over the past few years. There were no major changes required by this state in this section. But here we discuss a variety of things, including different accounting costs that the city follows, information on all the long-term debt of the city, budget and transfers are discussed, involvement in the capers and KPNF retirement programs are mentioned here as well. Like I said, numerous items discussed in this section. The next section forward is pages 15 through 43. Those are the more detailed breakdowns of those funds that we saw previously, pages four through five. Here we provide a more, more detailed breakout of different types of proceeds and expenditures that take place in each fund. I also present a prior year column, so we can compare 2024 activity to 2023 activity. And then also, if it's a budgeted fund, you'll see a budget column there, so you can see how the fund operated against the budget that was adopted for 2024. And then the last section in that audit report that's in the packet, it's called the governmental audit section, and it starts off with 24 and runs to the end of the document. This is called the governmental audit section. Anytime an entity receives and spends $750,000 or more of federal grant money, it's required by the federal government to go what's called a single audit. For 2024, we focused on the expenditures in the expenditures of the ARPA funds by the city that took place in 2024. So here we check and make sure that the city followed all federal and state requirements and guidelines regarding those grant funds. And so in 2024, we also issued an unmodified pick, which again is the highest issue. So that reflects very well on how city staff handled the expenditures of the ARPA funds during the year. The last thing I wanted to mention is we didn't have any auditor recommendations to communicate to the council tonight. So again, that reflects very well on the financial and internal control management by city staff. And the last thing is that we just had a great audit with Erica and her staff, and we appreciate her responding to our questions and reporting the information that we need, as well. With that, any questions for me on the audit report or the audit process for 2025?
I just want to thank Sean and his staff as well, because my staff really, a lot of us stressed out with that coming year, and he thinks it's really easy. They present in advance. The city had the governing body make, take much to watch to within for three years. So our 24 audit, which is what he's presenting tonight, and also our 25 and 26 audit. So at the end of this year, we'll start on the 2025 audit, and I already warned him, this one might not be as easy, because we changed our financial software in mid-May, and it's a completely different software. So it might make it a little bit more complicated to make things as smooth as it has been.
We'll get through it.
We use this software for 20 years that I've been here. We look forward to working with them again next year.
Sean, thank you.
Thank you. Erica, good job.
Thank you.
All right, we need to take, consider acceptance of the city's 2024 audit and financials. We'll need a motion for that.
I move for the acceptance of the city's 2024 audit financial.
Second it.
We've had a motion to approve the city's 2024 audit financials. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion, same sign? Motion carried. All right, we move into matters from and for the council. Josh, do you have anything other than the work session?
Nothing other than the work session.
Okay. Tonight, we need to consider scheduling the city council budget work session number five for Monday, July 14th, 6 o'clock. Yeah, that works for everyone.
Yeah, it'll work for me.
You guys good?
I'm good.
I find it to depend. But you said it's getting married this month, so it depends on what he's got going on that.
So you want to say it for that? Yeah.
So that's five of the six present. I'll check with, I'll check with the three part here and see how that fits.
I make a motion to schedule a city council budget work session number five for Monday, July 14th, 2025.
Got a motion in the second. Just schedule the city council budget work session number five, July 14th, 6 o'clock, in the council chambers. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Okay, that takes through our information memorandum area.
Mike?
I don't have anything. Whatever you're called.
President.
Clear.
Eric?
Nothing. Bob?
Nothing today.
Yep, I do have one thing. I had a SISN call me this weekend about the fireworks. Asking about the mulch and stuff around the flagpole. If we could get a better quality mulch or possibly, you know, pea gravel or some rock and make it look a little better. That was it.
Okay.
I just want to thank the staff and everybody for the fireworks show. It was great. Fire Department was out there. It was pretty fun and wild. I enjoyed it. So thanks, thanks to everyone that kept it safe for us.
And I just, one last thing for me to add. Couple weeks ago, the windstorm blew down a branch in my mother-in-law's backyard. It took out the power, kind of a part of the neighborhood. Electric company came down, worked well enough to get that power back on the things over there. And I just wanted to tell them I really appreciate the work they put in, the effort they put in, and thought they did a wonderful job, and very professional, and just a great job. So thank you.
That?
All right. I make a motion that we move to recess, go into executive session for 15 minutes for preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real properties pursuant to the exception case that is 75-4319B6, as the city manager Josh Shaw and the city attorney join the council in the executive session. The open meeting, the governing body will reconvene in the council chambers at 7:35.
Second. I motion second to go into executive session until 7:35 PM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prove it in time. Stand to recess. Stand to recess. I have a motion to ex- to exit executive session where no action was taken. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Entertained a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second it. I make a motion that
Got a motion in the second to adjourn the meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, thank you.